The June meeting of the Historic Preservation Board. First off, can we do a roll call?
Chair Alcorn.
Present.
Commissioner Field. Commissioner Henderson.
Present.
Commissioner Honi.
Present.
Commissioner Ritter. Commissioner Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Fisher and Vice Chair Mirab are absent tonight. We do have a quorum.
All right, thank you. If everyone will please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and then next up, we'll just approve the agenda. Do we need a mo- we need, okay. Does anybody have any edits to the agenda? All right, we are good. And then next, we will approve the minutes from the April 15th meeting.
I move that we approve the minute, minutes as written.
Does anybody want a second?
I would second that.
Okay, great. All right, so we'll go ahead and do a vote. Oh, whoops, that's wrong.
Ee-oh.
I don't know how to press.
Tap off, tap off.
This one.
Okay, it should be coming up now.
Oh, there we go.
Oh.
All right.
Not yet. Tap it. Should do it. Should ask me.
Honi.
Yeah, so you should have. So Mr. Hon voted, but it's not showing up. Oh, you know what, turn off the mic.
The one that you didn't choose flashes, that's weird to me.
Should I just close it?
You want to close it and open it again?
Sure. Oh, we got them all, actually.
The vote is six in favor, the motion carries.
All right, so the next part of the agenda is the public comment. These are not related to the two hearings tonight, this is just general public comment.
Paige, I'm sorry, Paige, we only have one hearing tonight, the other is general business.
Okay.
So public comment would be an appropriate time to talk about the general business.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment? All right, while Pam's coming up, I'm just going to read our public comment blurb. Public comment is an opportunity to express opinions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda. A separate opportunity will be provided for comment for any public hearing. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We expect comments to be civil, disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. The board is not authorized under the Colorado Opens Meeting Law to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda.
So hello, Historic Preservation Board Commission, my name is Pam Chadbourne, I live a block and a half from here. First off, I would say that for the audience, it would be better, actually, we need your names on the dais in front of you, and I'm just going to mention that for the record. Theoretically, the audio is being fixed in the next four weeks while council's taking a little break, and I want those labels somehow. It shouldn't be that hard to even include something short term, but your names, we really should be able to see who you are. Second, and my most important topic is Historic Preservation serves the city of Littleton, but I think this board has been inappropriately restrained from taking its part in preserving history of Littleton for the past several years. And I'm really concerned to see a five-year plan for tonight, although I'm glad to see it, and I'm glad we have a Historic Preservation Planner finally. And so, let me just say Historic Preservation is an economic development tool for cities. It tends to operate over decades and cycles, it's not always up, it's not always up, but Historic Preserve, Preservation Districts tend to perform better in economic downturns than regular districts or whatever. They're simply more resilient, and they also build interest in the city, and our downtown proves that. So even as an opt-in district, it flourished and has been a major contributor to the downtown we have today. So I'm concerned about the future of Littleton Boulevard, I think we're going to lose it. I do not see the urgent actions that we must have to modify the ULUC immediately to get standards and guidelines into place, and then to present a preservation plan for Littleton Boulevard. We've got to do that, and you must be freed from an artificial legal restriction on your speech. You have First Amendment rights, you have every right, and in fact, an obligation because of your position on the board, from my point of view as a citizen, to speak for the positive aspects of Historic Preservation. We urgently need that now. There are plenty of things you can't do, but there's a lot you can do, and we need our attorneys to tell you what you can say. So for this, we need standards and guidelines for Littleton Boulevard, and we need a very urgent statement of how we're going to preserve the properties that are have, we've already documented since 2018, are valuable to the city. And the integrity of that mile from actually Lowell Plate Canyon to downtown to Broadway is really important, and I think it will serve the city for a century if you can only contribute to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as a part of the public comment? Okay, so we'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting, and we'll move on to our general business, HPC Resolution 03-2024. Great, can y'all hear me? Is it, yeah, I think we're good. Okay, so this first item is for Historic Preservation Tax Credit application for 5475 Mohawk Road over in the Arapahoe Hills Historic District. So just a little bit about what's going on tonight. We are doing the state income tax credit. Those are currently valued at 25% of qualified costs, or $50,000, whichever is less. As I mentioned, this is a contributing structure of the Arapahoe Hills Historic District, and the current owners completed this work between July of 2023 and January of this year. For the process, the entire scope must meet the Secretary of Interior Standards Rehabilitation. These applications, unlike our COAs, are approve everything or none of it, and they must meet the qualified rehabilitation expenditure per state code. The work was completed within 24 months, and we are within that 90-day determination period. So this is the location, it is in the Arapahoe Hills District, down towards the south end. A very quick history, constructed in 1961, the district was nominated in 2012, and then again, the project period was July through January. So the three main components, the applicant repaired some under, underslab ducts that was associated with the original HVAC system, replaced an existing broken domed skylight, and then wanted to address some existing warped and damaged, or an existing warped and damaged damper within the chimney. For this first part, piece is the HVAC ducts, kind of below the one on the left side is showing the rust and damage. The applicant opted to seal it with a liquid latex so that they would not have to pull up any of the existing materials, the floors, registers, et cetera, nor put any exterior mechanical work. So this allowed for the original HVAC equipment to still be used, and the work minimally affected the house. This next one is the skylight replacement, the left side there is showing where it's broken, and you can see kind of the sealing, the seal around it is not great. The, on the right side is the new exterior, it does have a different film as a coating, but you can't see the domed skylight from the, can't see it on the building, it's the, kind of the roof kind of hides it, and then on the interior, it has a similar appearance as well, you can't tell when the sun is out. And again, just showing some of that damage and that it was not really fixable and needed to be replaced. This is also a more energy-efficient solution as well. Oh, I apologize, I, one slide, I did not include, apologies. The damper for the chimney is, they decided to do an exterior locked-up damper, it is slightly taller than the mechanism that was there beforehand, but it allowed them to have an exterior fix that was minimally kind of visually impactful, and then did not have to take apart the chimney, or the stack that's on the interior. Again, preserving material with having to deconstruct and reconstruct, it always leaves that kind of opportunity for damage worse than what the current conditions are. So for approval criteria, we found that it does meet the standard, Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, and that the qualified costs, they are qualified under state statute, and the total project cost was 8262.65. Staff recommends approval, HPC Resolution 03-2024, for a tax credit amount of $2,000, $2,056.65. And that is it. All right, thank you. I think, first off, before we start discussing, I want to just check in and see, was anybody able to do a site visit of this property? Okay, I did drive by yesterday, so I'll disclose that.
And I'll disclose that the applicants live in the same neighborhood I do, and I am acquaintances with them, but I discussed it with the city attorney this afternoon, and we determined that there's no conflict of interest.
Great, thank you. I guess this is now time for questions for staff and the applicant? Is that right? Okay, does anybody have any questions for Sarah or the applicant? Mm-hmm, yep.
First of all, I'm Field, and I have serious house envy right now, and I think that what you've done is very sensitive and very nice, and it must have been great fun to find the duct work underneath the slab and the issue. That probably, there was probably some cussing and discussing, but we won't get into that. Must have been a great idea in 1961, what could go wrong? And I would just like to point out, I have seen that kind of problem spelled doom for historic structures, and the fact that you did find a solution, a good solution, I commend you. And I'm so glad you didn't touch that fireplace. But I do have a question just about the chimney structure, is that visible from the street?
Hi, everyone, my name is Brent Forgé, I'm the homeowner, along with my husband, who couldn't be here tonight, and to answer your question, from the street, the chimney stack and the vent cap is not visible.
That's great, it's another elegant solution, well thought out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I would just like to echo Kim and say, I, that duct work problem seems really scary, so that you were able to find a solution that works while also maintaining the integrity is really great, so thank you. All right, so then I guess we'll just move right along. Does somebody want to make a, we need a motion, yeah, does somebody want to make a motion?
I move to approve based on the clerk's certification, the April 15, 20.
Commissioner Henderson.
Yeah.
We're not approving the minutes right now.
Oh.
We're approving this resolution.
But isn't this the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong resolution?
I'm happy to read the motion for you.
Yes, please.
Yeah, so adopted, yes.
Commissioner Henderson moved to approve HPC Resolution 03-2024, approving the Historic Preservation Tax Credit for 5475 Mohawk Road in the Arapahoe Hills National Register Historic District. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Thanks, Kim. So we have a motion and a second. And we just need a vote.
Okay, yes, yes.
Are you doing public hearing?
That's the next resolution, Pam. The vote is six in favor, the motion carries.
All right, great. Okay, so then we'll move to the second order of business on our agenda, this is the public hearing for HPC Resolution 02-2024. Sarah, do you want to present? Okay. Great, so we are looking at a certificate of appropriateness for a rear enclosed patio structure to be used for restaurant seating at 2399 West Main Street, also known as Favreal, or is the Favreal Restaurant. Here is the location, they're at the corner of Main and Prince, showing then this, the front, and then the rear is currently used for patio seating, it is just that metal fence with a fabric cover at the moment. Okay, so COAs are meant to review anything, any proposed exterior changes in efforts to preserve historic character. The application was appropriately noticed to residents within 700 feet and was posted on the property. The Historic Preservation Commission has the final determination, ah, determination, which is approve, approve with conditions, or deny. So just a quick overview, going to go over the proposed changes, the approval criteria, and then recommendation. For the proposed changes, they are looking at adding a rear enclosed patio structure. The materials, looking at the structure itself, will be powder-coated steel, the parapet is supposed to be corrugated metal, the envelope will be plexiglass, and then the dimensions, it's about 570 square feet, overall height is three feet with, sorry, overall height is 11 feet with a three-foot tall parapet wall, and then the roof is flat corrugated metal. This is the north elevation, it, as you can see, it's a steel and glass structure, it is subordinate in height and massing, height being the main parapet wall of the main, of the historic building. It does have ground to ceiling glass envelope, as well as a double door to exit the area, and then again, that corrugated metal parapet, and then a one-foot overhang just above at the base of the parapet wall. West elevation, going to be similar, as you can see, it's again subordinate in height, it is glass and steel as well, and then that corrugated metal parapet as well. The one-foot overhang does wrap around, or is supposed to wrap around, we are recommending to remove that overhang as it does extend kind of past, you'll see on the east side as well, it extends past the historic building, and then past the kind of historic unit space, it does kind of go over into the next area, and then over the sidewalk as well, and really just recommending to remove those as it kind of sits outside the footprint of the building, and generally, we try not to addition, should not go beyond the kind of existing building. Similar on that east elevation, it does have another kind of small egress door as well, similar materials, and again, the overhang. So we looked at the Secretary of Interior Standards, the downtown Littleton Historic Preservation Design Guidelines, as well as the ULUC, and we found that everything did meet the criteria except for that one-foot overhang primarily for, related to architectural detail, and then kind of going beyond that building. The recommendation is to approve with conditions, and, and that again, is just to remove that one-foot overhang from the east and west elevations, the rest of the structure is appropriate in size and scale, it is contemporary compared to the other building, and is a similar structure to others that have been approved in downtown, across the street, the Denver Beer Company there is a good example. And that is it. All right, thank you. Do we go to public hearing next, or comment, questions for staff and the applicant?
The public comment portion.
Okay, awesome. So we are going to open the public hearing at 6:55. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this project? Okay, let's.
We're not presenting yet.
This is the public comment, so you'll have the opportunity to present after we close the public comment. Pam, would you like to come up?
I'm Pam Chadbourne, I still live a block and a half from here, and I live three blocks from this site. As a point of order, I would like to say, I think that the public comment should follow the questions part of the order of business, so that the public can benefit from the applicant's. the questions part of the order of business, so that the public can benefit from the applicant's comments and from your questions. And then, after public comment, then you go into your discussion. And I thought that was the order of business. I would like that to be the order of business. I think it's the right thing to do. That said, if you approve this, please approve it only with the condition of removing those overhangs, but I'm concerned about it. And actually, our staff presenter mentioned why. Well, look, there's already a building across the street like this. I don't think the building like, across the street should look like this. And then the building next to it has these huge silver HVAC stuff on top of it, the Hanson Brothers Printing Company, when it was repurchased, suddenly somehow a bunch of HVAC equipment appeared up there without any public hearing or review by this body. This started with the Carnegie Library. I think the encroachment on the front yard of the Carnegie Library, the public area that allows people coming down Main Street to see the Carnegie Library. When it became a restaurant, the restaurant started saying, well, we want to use this front area and we're going to put stuff there for tables. And it covered, it, they grew and got bigger and plasticker and lighted and obscured the Carnegie Library. I think against the intent of our code, against the good of the district, against the good of the library, which I think is a gem of Littleton and finding. And so, the Carnegie Library, I think this body actually considered this over a decade ago, and the folks responded a bit to cut down the clutter, but it's back. And so, that's a bad thing. And so then, and like I say, I do think another building wanted to put some large HVAC stuff, and that was questioned, and that HVAC was shielded. Well, then suddenly, on Hanson Brothers Building, I'm not going to call it, you know, the commercial use now, that stuff appeared without any comment. And then, the Denver Brewing Company put up plastic and steel. And I don't, the plastic, it doesn't fit in our downtown. I just demand that. And so, I'm confused by the presentation. It said glass and steel, but then it said plexiglass. Is it plastic? I'm going to say, I support this business, I like them, I want them to thrive and survive. I want them to stay in Littleton. I think economic success, though, can be achieved in other ways, and I'm really concerned about the growth of this kind of modification in downtown. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. Before we close the public comment, is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak? Okay, I will close the public comment at six fifty-eight, and now we'll open it up for the applicant for a presentation, if you'd like to come up.
Commissioners, nice to meet you all.
I need to speak directly into the microphone.
Sorry. My name is Matt, I'm here representing my client, Lee. She's the owner of Favreal, and we're proposing the addition to the back.
Good evening, my name is Lee, I'm the owner of Favreal, and I just want to apply for the permit to enclose my patios, to have, to keep the restaurant running for many years more. So, would like to, having the benefit of having enclosed patios, so my customer referred to have the restaurant with the patios, and help the customer feel more comfortable while dining the outdoor, dining outdoor. It will help my restaurant increase the capacity all year round, instead of like using the patio right now, just for the summer. Right now, I would like to enclose it, that I have the customer for all year long. And I just, and it will increase the privacy for all the customer dine in, in my restaurant. Thank you.
I would also like to add to Pam's argument as well, the structure across the street that ours is going to be much more elegant. It is a touch of modern, obviously, but I appreciate historic buildings more than anything, and I'm pleased that Lee gave me the opportunity to work and build something in your guys' district, so. I'm going to make sure that it is timeless and it looks fantastic. We're going to do upkeep on it for ten years, twenty years, like it's going to be a forever structure. And we're not changing the face of the building at all, we're not changing anything. It's going to look great, and we are going to cover the HVAC that's on the current building as well. So, that is something that Cal, Cal had proposed that we do, so we were going to add a corrugated structure that kind of gives signage opportunity, and it covers what's existing on the roof right now. If that helps you guys make your decision at all.
I'm Angela Vega, and she's actually my daughter-in-law. But from what I'm understanding from this enclosed patio that they're planning on doing, they're trying to make people feel a little bit more comfortable when they dine outside. Right now, when they're dining outside, there's other businesses, sometimes it's very warm. My understanding, not only are they going to have the patio, but they're also going to try to put some type of an air conditioning system. So in that way, the customers, when they come in, they have the option of eating inside, where we'll have ceiling fans, or sitting outside in the back, in which they'll be, it'll be a family-friendly, air-conditioned patio.
We'll allow for more people to come hang out downtown and appreciate it. And I don't know if you guys have ever eaten pho, but it's not too comfortable to eat it when it's ninety-five degrees outside, so that might give them the opportunity to pack that thing for the summer. And also, I'd like to add the foot that you were talking about. I've had the material cut down to be flush with the building, so we're not extending out into public walks, so. I will have that added, just so you guys know.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Sarah or the applicant?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The rendering shows a parapet on the existing building. Is that on top of the existing wall, or is it supposed to be like that?
Yes, so that is actually going to be added on the roof structure for signage.
All the way around the building?
Yes, just on, on three sides. And it will allow for signage for the restaurant, which will be removable.
And the reason for that is what?
Cal had requested it, the owner of the building, he had requested if we could do that, so that was why that was added.
Because I would think that if it's trying to shield the HVAC equipment, I visited the building and it seems like the back of the building has a drop-down area where you can see the HVAC equipment.
So the HVAC covering that I just presented to you guys, that's going to be a separate project that I do with Cal? So that, this isn't, what's on the, on the blueprint is not what's supposed to cover the HVAC. That's going to be a separate proposal that I think is brought with Cal.
Well, again, my opinion, it seems to me that if you just put the galvanized parapet wall between the two existing walls, it would hide the existing HVAC, HVAC equipment on the roof, and you wouldn't have to add this, you know, anything to the existing building.
I would like to go and look at that, because I am in agreement with you, obviously. It's just something that the building owner had expressed to me.
Yeah, I mean, I could possibly see that. The reason for the parapet wall on the addition is for what?
It's for signage. It's for signage, and I just thought we would, we would use it so there could be signs on each side, and the building owner had discussed it with me as well.
Okay.
So it doesn't actually serve a purpose, except to put a sign on, so it is removable at the discretion of your board, if need be. Or if there is a more elegant way to cover the HVAC, then we can do that as well.
Okay. Then I was a little bit confused. The ceiling height of the new addition is what on the interior?
Interior at eleven, eleven feet.
I see. And, and the roof, the roof that's called for in the drawing, is it standing, is it a galvanized metal roof?
Yes, that is correct.
So it would have some type of a pitch to it?
It will have a pitch to correct for snow load and everything, so I went through the building codes for that.
I see, and, and so I guess there would be some form of drainage?
Yes.
From the, from the roof that we're not actually seeing, right?
There will be a slight gutter that won't really be noticeable, that's under this section on the back that faces the parking lot.
The parking lot, yeah. Okay. I guess the only other thing that I'd, I'd like to just note or throw out there is, is that I did look through the design guidelines, and one of the things it says is that additions are supposed to be subordinate to the existing structure. I take that as being smaller than the existing structure. So, when I looked at the drawings, it's, the overall design seems to be pretty high, almost the same as the existing building, when you look at the elevations of the drawings.
I know that we are four, four feet, which we're actually more at six feet from the roof, so we are subordinate to the structure.
So the top of the, when I look at your elevation drawings, it looks to me like the top of the galvanized parapet? And the existing building there that you have alongside, to the right of it, that's four feet?
Yes, it is. I know that the existing building is in part, yeah, ten, it is high. That was changed, we cut the material.
What do you mean here?
It will be about three feet below. So if this needs to be adjusted, then I can provide you guys with some updated, because I know that this roof pitch has changed because of the addition that Cal had requested, because originally, we were just going to do a pitched roof with no, with no sheeting around it for the signage.
I think if I understand correctly, is the answer to Mr. Oni's question, that the rooftop, the bottom of the parapet is about three feet from the...
No, no, no.
No?
The top, the top of the parapet that you're creating, this galvanized parapet.
Yeah.
If you look at the, if you look at elevation BB, well, CC kind of shows it better, the top of the parapet between the top of, I'm assuming, the existing building, is the dimension that I'm trying to figure out what it actually is. It looks to me to be three feet tops, if that's...
Yeah, let me get back to Sarah with true dimensions, because my designer did do these, but I could get true dimensions on.
I'd certainly like to see that.
Okay.
The other thing too is the color, the color of the parapet is what?
The color of the parapet's going to be corrugated steel, so it's just...
Just galvanized?
Galvanized steel.
Okay, I guess that's my only questions.
Thank you.
Can I ask for clarification on the conversation that just occurred? Did you say you're changing the existing structure by adding a parapet to it?
No, sir. Just, just to the structure that we're proposing, that's all.
I thought Robert asked, are you changing the existing structure?
If you look at, if you look at the, the rendering, the computer-generated little rendering, it looks to me like a parapet wall is being added to the top of the existing building.
No, this is just being added to the addition.
Okay, so I guess this is incorrect, then, what I'm looking at?
And to speak to what you had asked, the structure where I said we were covering the HVAC, that's going to be a totally separate application and project, the, the building owner. Okay.
It might just be an error in...
I think it is, and that's what I'm trying to get clarification on. If you look at the, if you look at the rendering, there's definitely a galvanized parapet on the existing building.
Yeah, then that's, that's incorrect, because we're not adding anything to the existing building.
But I do think when you get to the thing about the shielding of the HVAC equipment, you might want to look at that thing about where, if you look at the back of the building, it drops down, and you can see the HVAC equipment that's there now from the street.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, this galvanized parapet thing, that would work in that section perfectly to hide the existing HVAC equipment, and who knows what, maybe if you have to add some for the addition, that would, looks to me to be an ideal solution.
That's what Cal had expressed, too, that he wants to hide that from the road view, because it is visible, so.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, though, the information that was in the packet needs to be updated? It's not the, what we're voting on?
I'm not showing an addition on the existing structure. Are we looking at different?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the three-D rendering.
No, it is, I...
If you're telling us that that's incorrect, then, then fine.
Yeah, I was about to...
Okay. All right, because I know we...
Sarah, I'm curious, can you put that up on the screen, maybe, so we can all see it together? And then, if the applicant wants to head back to the microphone, so everybody can hear the discussion?
This is, which document is this?
Yeah, that was a previous rendering, so.
No. I think it's the exhibit, what we were looking for is the Exhibit Plan B, Exhibit B Plan Set for CRA Twenty Four Oh Oh Two. But, but... To the gentleman's point, I don't know if we can just take in an advisement that, that the three-D rendering is wrong, but the stuff we've been discussing is right? I, I have no idea, I have no guidance on that.
Whatever's in the application needs to be correct, and that's what's going to be proposed before the board. And so if the application is incorrect, I'm not following what drawing or rendering it is, but we need to make sure that that's the correct document before the board can vote on that.
I can pull that rendering out, that's not a problem.
Yeah, so the one confusion is there's a single rendering that was included that has, like, probably looks like almost copied, that just had a corrugated parapet added on to that, that structure that is just there for massing, really, to show the addition coming off. So that's where that point of confusion is right now. That was not, I apologize for missing that. In our conversations, that was never part of it, so I understand the confusion, though, apologies on that one. But that is the conversation right now, and I'm trying to grab the picture of it so I can throw it up there, just so everyone can see it.
Thank you.
And the parapet is something that could be removed, I mean, it's just...
Yes, sir.
I would assume it's metal studs and...
It, it will be secured in there, obviously, to be taken down if wind permits, but yes, it can be removed.
When I asked you the question about the drainage, is that something that we would see on the outside of the building, or?
No, sir, it's going...
Something almost like a Yankee gutter would be.
It's going to be hidden. It's not going to be on the interior, it will be on the exterior, but it will be out of, out of sight. It's going to be under the overhang that goes towards the parking lot that faces it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do the windows open?
They do, so every other plexiglass window is going to be retractable, so you can turn it about a hundred and eighty degrees to allow for airflow.
So the visual of the building with open windows will be very different than the visual of what we've seen where everything is flush and flat?
I wouldn't say different, because, I mean, it's not a hundred and eighty degrees, so they won't be able to open like, into the, into the public area, but it will allow wind to pass through. I don't, I don't think that the visual representation is going to be that different, but I would be happy to get renderings done, if you would like to see them.
Do we know with the opening of the window, because it seems it's very flush to the building, this addition, will the opening of the window be something that pedestrians would potentially have impede their walking?
No, the ones that are going to be openable, it will be to the inside, and it will be half of every... No, the ones that are going to be openable, it will be to the inside, and it will be half of every other, other window panel, excuse me.
Is the, um, how does the galvanized steel age, is there a patina that happens, or how does it look over time?
So over the course of a couple of years, it does weather, but it does, it looks really cool. I could provide you guys with a picture of it, but it may get a little rust possibly, or we could coat it with protective layer, that way it stays galvanized for the test of time. But it does weather to kind of give it a different feel, if you may.
Is there anything that's going to happen with the floor? Um, I know it's just a patio right now, so is it a cement, or what is, what is on the floor part of it?
It's, it's currently cement. We're going to demo out the corners to set the footings for the steel structure, and then I'm going to kind of re-mask the floor with a, with a fresh coat, so it looks new. Because the concrete's obviously pretty weathered back there, but we're just going to go over it with a skim coat, that way everything looks clean and new.
For the drainage, I know we're talking about drainage a lot, and I know Cal owns the, the buildings that are right next to each other. Is there existing, or will this try to solve for any new type of, with this, this extra new amount of, um, surface area that is now draining into the parking lot? How is everything graded so that it's not going to drain inadvertently into the neighboring building, or the neighboring lot? And also, is that taken into consideration for the floor? If it's graded in a way where there's going to be, um, some, some way for any accumulation of liquid or moisture to exit?
So the existing floor, we're not going to be changing the grade or the pitch of the existing floor, we're just going to refresh it. But the roof has absolutely taken into account the gradient and the pitch out to the sewer water area. So everything will be slightly pitched as, to allow for snow load and everything in the winter, so it drains properly. And Cal and I had discussed the parking lot situation, because I am aware that it does pool out there. So I believe he was going to present something with me to you guys about adding a French drain in the parking lot at a later date. But this structure will drain towards the road correctly, and it will not add to the water that's already being dumped into the parking lot.
Okay, so it goes road, to the roadside?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And tell me about the downspouts for the guttering?
So there is going to be one hidden gutter on this side that faces the parking lot, and those two sides are going, they're not going to be a foot out, they're going to be raised, so it just drains into that gutter, and we were going to rain chain it.
Okay.
Until Cal and I talk about, to you guys, what to do about the drainage issue. Which all of this can tie into it, and if anything gets added on to the building in the future, I'll make sure that it's, you know, able to be tied into, so the parking lot's safe, relatively ice-free.
The win, the window frames and the main members that come down, what color are those?
Robert, can you turn your microphone on, please?
I'm sorry, I'm not speaking into it. Um, the, uh, the window frames and the main, I'll call them supports, what color are those?
Those are the same powder-coated black that the steel will be.
That's good.
I didn't want to add a bunch of colors in it, so.
And just to be clear, what we're looking at right now in this rendering, what you were pointing out is inadvertently left in, is the parapet on the original building. We couldn't, wha- what we're talking about is whether or not we can just ignore that it's there, is that correct?
Yes, sir. This, this actual photo that you're looking at can be disregarded. It should not have been on there, so I apologize.
So Atassi, just to be clear, if we move forward with a motion, would we need to also say our, we would need to make a decision on this parapet since it's been left in the packet?
So this is just in the staff report, was this also included in the application?
Yeah, it's, it's the, in the application, it's the only drawing that has this parapet on it, um, so yeah.
Then I would, I would make that very clear in the discussion.
Okay, thank you, and in the motion as well?
No, the motion should remain the same, because if I'm not mistaken, it's the one that has the condition on it, so that should just be read as is.
Okay.
I feel like I'm seeing a lot of surprises that I wasn't really expecting to walk in the, in the room for. Um, first of all, the signage that you mentioned, I think that's a separate discussion. And, um, I'm not comfortable with approving anything based on this drawing, because it's, I mean, it's just, we, we have to make too many assumptions on this, in, in my opinion. And I'm not, I'm imagining without the parapet on the building, how subordinate this structure actually is to the building. And so you're saying the overhang is definitely gone?
The overhang is, is definitely gone, yes. And this is the only, this picture shouldn't have been included, so I'll take responsibility for that, if we could pull it so it doesn't cloud the vision of it.
And what's, and it's going to actually be the black core, um, powder coated?
Correct, this is an old rendering, this shouldn't have been in the application. But yes, it is, everything is black powder coated and clear.
Well, we're trying to figure out, um, just how subordinate this structure is to the original building, and it looks like if we look at this, which has been passed around, which to my knowledge is not a, a part of anything that's been included officially, that you have a, a height differential of, of three feet or four feet?
It's, it should be four feet, but yes, with, without that, you are right, the subordination of it is significantly different than with...
Okay, so we don't, we don't have a definitive, is it three feet or four feet?
It i- it is four feet. I need to have the true dimensions of the side of the building, which should have been on that plan, but I made sure that it, it needed to be at least four feet, because I knew that we needed to be a subordinate structure.
Chair, if I may suggest, um, just from my perspective, I think it may just be cleaner to continue this to a date certain and have all of the proper documentation added into the packet, so that the board can actually see, and we can kind of clear up any of the confusion.
Yeah, that was going to be my suggestion after the, um, after the discussion. I, I agree with Kim, I don't feel comfortable approving a plan without definitive, without it being definite in the packet, and with all of the dimensions, um, really clear.
I would agree with that, definitely. Because I think the proportions are very important, between what's new and what's old, and I don't think we're getting a real accurate depiction of what that actually is.
And I know that we've kind of gone over this a few times, but I do think it's really important to have a definite answer on the parapet of the original building, because that does change the building if it's on multiple sides.
Absolutely. I'll make sure on the redesign that I submit with you guys, that I'll, I will overlay the structure on to the existing building, and I will call out in big red numbers what those, what those are, that way you guys can be for certain.
I would be interested to, um, Lizzie, uh, Board Member Ritter, asked about the coloring of how, how the stain, how the steel may change over time and what that color would look like. If you could provide a picture of that, too, I think that would be a helpful detail to have.
I could bring you guys a picture, and I'll bring you an actual sample, how about that? Cool.
May I also ask that, I know it's small, but if we're going to redo it anyways, um, just an indication of what the drainage location would be and how it would look? I know you're hiding it, but I'd love to just have an idea of where it will be?
Absolutely.
And then the visual.
And also, do we need to, um, uh, explore the, the signage request a little further?
I would say yes, even though you're not asking me.
I think those are all conversations that, um, we can address with staff before they bring it back to the commission.
That sounds good. But, uh, before we leave this, I do want to say, I love this restaurant, and I'm so glad that, um, you're, you're doing well.
Thank you guys very much. Should I be in touch with Sarah about, okay, cool.
Um, how do I move things along?
So if we are going to move to continue to a date certain, uh, your next meeting date is July fifteenth, uh, and so we would just need a motion and a second to continue this PC resolution. Is this O2, Sarah? Or, so, uh, a motion to continue PC Resolution O2 dash twenty twenty-four to a date certain of July fifteenth, and we would need a motion and a second for that.
Is that doable for the applicant?
Let me check my schedule.
Otherwise, we're, uh, into August.
Yeah, then it works. Fifteenth, same time, six thirty, okay.
The third Monday.
Awesome, thank you guys very much, I appreciate your time.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion? Or Colleen, can you make a motion for us?
I would need a mover and a second, but the motion would be to continue PC Resolution O2 dash twenty twenty-four to a date certain of July fifteenth. Do I have a motion?
I'll move, uh, what she said.
And I'll second.
Thank you, so we have a motion by Commissioner Field and a second by Chair Alcorn to continue PC resol, or I'm sorry, HPC Resolution O2 dash twenty twenty-four to a date certain on July fifteenth, if we could have a vote, please.
I just want to say thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to addressing this in the future.
The vote is six in favor, the motion carries.
All right, so we'll move on to the comments and reports section of the meeting. Um, Community Development Staff, do you have any comments or reports?
I do not.
Great, thank you.
We're all good. Actually, no, I do have one thing. The state did pass, um, some tax credit, um, some legislation around historic tax credits. Um, so they did expand, um, that primarily within the realm of commercial tax credits, um, which we don't review here, but opens up another pool for tax, for projects that have to do with housing, um, and can actually get even more tax credit, it, credits if it's, I believe, fifty percent affordable housing. Um, and I believe on the residential side of things, they did open it up to a hundred thousand is the top out in terms of credit back, as opposed to just fifty thousand. So, um, the only other thing is it did change, we are currently under the kind of emergency orders from, um, COVID, so I do think it shortens that, but that's in twenty twenty-five, so it'll go back to a twenty percent residential tax credit. But, yeah, that just got passed this last legislative session.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to make just a comment about the packet. Um, I like how you included the secretary's criteria in a discussion. Um, I liked that you attached, um, the design guidelines, and then, you know, later on, uh, the envisioned plan, um, which is, uh, two wonderful resources that the commission can bookmark on their computer and even possibly print out, um, because I, I know I love working off of print, and you can pry my cold dead fingers from my print copies. But I wa, I was very, very happy for that.
I was actually thinking about printing it out today.
Before y'all do that, I might have a wealth of extra copies.
Oh, great.
So I might be able to bring them to you, so don't print anything just yet, because that's a lot of paper.
Okay.
So I think we already have copies.
Yeah, that would be fantastic at the next meeting.
We'd be very appreciative.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right, um, City Attorney, City Clerk, any updates or comments?
No, Chair, thank you.
Nothing from the clerk's office, thank you.
Okay, great, and then Board Members, any updates, comments?
I'm just representing for HLI. HLI, Historic Littleton, Inc., is, um, doing a series of, of tours and talks and events, and, um, they're well worth attending, um, and they are on the HLI website.
Perfect, yeah, I know there's going to be an event potentially in September, um, that will be open to the public and focused on Littleton Boulevard, um, to learn more about our mid-mod architecture. So, once there's more information and a date, we can definitely bring that to Chair. All right, well, I will adjourn this meeting of the HPC at seven thirty-one, thank you.
Reminder that we do have a study session immediately following. Did you want to take a quick break before we call that to order?
Yeah, let's take a quick five-minute break, is that okay?
Thanks. Thanks.
Should we be using it as a guiding factor?
We do not have like a preservation plan. We have some, we have survey work that's been done kind of in the previous years in reviewing sea ways like tonight. We have a Littleton Legacy List, which is just buildings that we think have historic value but are not designated currently. So it's fair from what I can tell, we don't have a clear citywide preservation plan yet.
So theoretically, a five-year strategic plan that we created might have as a goal to create the conversation.
Yes, absolutely.
Is this subject to this five-year strategic plan? Is it subject to public input and comment? It's not a public document in that way?
Correct. Yeah, this is just kind of, I say strategic plan, work plan is also maybe a better nomenclature for it. Either one, they kind of get used interchangeably. I am happy to use whatever term makes the most sense for y'all. But this is primarily an internal document. It just kind of gives structure to what we're, what you guys are trying. How you can start to be more involved, less involved, et cetera, with growing preservation in Littleton.
For our agenda, a five-year agenda?
Yeah, yeah. And it, but it's not, as I said, an agenda set in stone. It can shift. So as new plans come on board, we may change and use recommendations from that as well. So it's definitely something that is living, but it's helpful to look at it in a chunk of time as opposed to just the next few months. You could have a little bit more, it goes a little less overwhelming. And then it also just gives you more time to kind of understand the components and what you're wanting to accomplish. And then also time to understand, is this easy or not? So it definitely doesn't have to be an overly formal kind of process. It's really just what.
If I'm, if I can ask a question.
Absolutely.
It might, it might be useful to me if, if any of our sisters, I've never seen one of these strategic plans before. So I don't really, like, if you said, hey, can you write one of these by Monday? I wouldn't even know, like, how long is it? You know, what goes into it? So, you know, maybe it'd be cool to look at one that was good, you thought was good. Even if the actual strategies were not relevant to us, because they would not be, right? But, but how they're presented, for me, it would be helpful to see a good example of.
Yeah, and I can get some examples and put those together out there. Generally, structuralized, they can be as short or long as we need. Most of the time, if it's not a kind of full publicly, publicly based kind of document, they do tend to be on the shorter side. So you're, it's going to be maybe a little bit of background on, just kind of that, what's the purpose of the plan, what we're wanting to kind of accomplish with it. And then it really goes into just identifying those goals and those objectives and then back work plan. But I will definitely send some comments. I worked on one with Northland and it was a probably 15 pages max. So they, it's pretty simple. And it's really just that kind of, the most helpful item, and again, this is if it works best for you guys to have in this format. Great, it's not, you can figure something out, but kind of Excel spreadsheet style where it's like, this is the goal, this is the objective, this is the action item that we're trying to do. Then you say kind of who is involved, the potential funding and the timeline. It's often the kind of components for that. But absolutely, we'll send examples because hearing it versus seeing it, very different things. Hope we understand that.
That sounds good, yeah.
Is Sarah, one thing that I know council has asked for from HPC is a work plan.
Okay.
And they will not read fifty pages.
Correct.
They like a spreadsheet, 11 by 17.
Okay.
Front and back, maybe a couple pages, like, so.
Yeah, so that works for y'all. That also works as first by putting it together. If we need 50 pages, great. If we don't, great. It's good. Kind of we're wrapped. So yeah, absolutely. If that 11 by 17 style works best, I'm happy to receive.
But they could be our different pages, but you know.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
I could see how the process could be bogged down if we started to get really specific. And there's sort of a tension between wanting to be specific because that really holds us accountable to getting things accomplished versus the more specific we get, the more attention it's going to draw, the more sort of, there's some beauty in keeping things general. So I'm interested in having some help around that.
Yeah, absolutely. And that is a great point to make. Even with the action items, because those do get kind of granular, they can still be as broad as saying, complete preservation thing. We don't have to go in and say, do engagement for preservation plan, do X, Y, and Z. It can just be that broad, complete this thing. It doesn't have to go into each minute step. And that does help us keep out of, out of the pieces of that. So I agree, because that does get very difficult. Sometimes it's nice when you're doing each individual step because it allows you to like mark it off the list faster. But discussion wise, it definitely slows things down.
Well, I'm curious to, oh, sorry.
Just to finish with that thing. We, again, we're a public body and if we said something like, identify three new historic districts.
Right.
But where, which, kind of suddenly it's a very complicated and controversial question that we're putting this internal document. So.
So instead it could be. Absolutely. And definitely, so it could be something as simple as utilize existing survey materials, Littleton Legacy List, et cetera, you, to understand potential new districts. So we don't have to be as specific as three, but we can say, let's still work on identifying potential new resources.
I was going to say too, kind of in that same vein, like, this is a five-year plan. There's hopefully a lot that we can get done, but I guess how much, like, how many action items or how many things should we have in the plan? Where we have stuff that we're focusing on, but maybe not overwhelmed with, you know, 100 rows on its own spreadsheet.
Yeah, so it's kind of up to y'all on how you want to do it. I've seen a lot where the goals are as simple as preservation and meaning kind of more the practical and structural kind of preservation, engagement and outreach or education, and then internal education or internal outreach, meaning with other boards, missions, city council, et cetera. I feel like the ones I've seen haven't been more than like about the goals, meaning as few or as many as you would like. And so that's kind of. I think that's a good place. There is definitely a balance, I think. It's also one of the things we've got is there's a time element. And staff can't do everything. So I definitely, when we put some of those items in, some of it will just be staff. Makes sense for staff to just do it. So also think about your own time and capacity and what we think is realistic. And I can kind of be here and say, and if you guys don't mind me saying, this feels a little bit much. Or we're going a little too far into the weeds, if you're okay with me kind of. Or we're going a little too far into the weeds, if you're okay with me kind of popping in and just being like, we got staff right now. Or we need to take a step back, then I don't want to step on anyone's toes, but if we, if we kind of like keep that structured, yeah, that's great. And I think the examples will help, some of the, there's a variety. One of the issues that we definitely have ran into previously is, are those items that are kind of ongoing? They may not need to be in this spreadsheet. We know we're gonna kind of continue to do these things each year. It can just be kind of a policy or an idea, that we just kind of give a list of, like, these are kind of the ongoing things that we wanna make sure we do. This list, which might pull hair down some of that timeline, could be really the things that we're wanting, we know are kind of a one-off project, will lead us into a broader, we can keep doing this every year. But we need to take that first step. So that will probably help as well.
Can you probably include those things that are sort of built in, or the business's usual components? Help manage the overall scope, so that it's not impossible to put goals together that then all of a sudden everybody's that hundred and fifty percent, because we forgot about the day-to-day. I, I, where I'm going is a preference for the strategic plan to show all, not a minutia, but the full scope, so that it doesn't end up blowing up, and be like, well, we forgot about our daily chores.
Like the second half.
This beautiful, yeah. Also, for this being the strategic plan, it also seems like it could be almost the minimum, where we say, great, we have these five goals, we're ready to work on goal number two, and for that goal, we can now develop one project. That does bend into a bit more of a step than the minutia, so that can, that could be. Right, you don't just show off, we don't take it all, right?
Correct, correct, yeah. You don't, this is really kind of the overarching, what we're looking at doing. The action items help, we do get into some minutia with that, but they help in terms of just providing that clear, like, okay, we're beginning in twenty twenty-five, what are the things that are, should be done in twenty-five? What was supposed to be done in twenty-four? And so we can kind of say, hey, this wasn't done, but there's not really an appetite for it, like we thought there might be, like a little bit of shift, et cetera. But they can be relatively broad still, and then once you say, let's do this project, that's when we go into details of how to think about it, what does that exactly look like? Having some of that upfront understanding of what it is, what we think the funding is, how long, that's another thing is not only when we wanna do it, but how long we think we might do. That's always helpful information to kind of think about, if we're getting stuck on it, though, that's good. That's kind of the thing. And then to your point about understanding kind of the day-to-day and what we do. I'm, I've seen them both ways. I kind of like highlighting how much work we do, even if it's only us that look at it. It's sometimes a good reminder to say, hey, are doing things? Sometimes it feels like nothing's happening. And so when it's not, you know that, like, you still are playing a role in the city, you're still doing something that is a benefit. But having in the plan, kind of shape, kind of gives you that. But it also makes it clear, you know, the fact, your point is saying, we don't have that. This is, we gotta take that, that's not something we can do right now. Or it needs to be a larger project that is like more, there's a volume to the direction, and that's kind of what for that answer direction.
It might be helpful to just, you know, kind of look, you know, objective strategies, tactics, rolling out underneath it. So for strategies that support our objectives, you know, tactics that we might employ. And also, gosh, rather than a five-year plan, which means, you know, we're not gonna look at it until the night before. But, you know, a one-year, this, what we're gonna do this year, in twenty twenty-four, or, you know, fiscal year twenty-four, whatever that might be, to just, you know, approach it like, we have that, it's really be the work and really we work at all. So I think council, per se, gave us a review, and, and say, what did we do this year? And we have five minutes to tell me what we did. And we can do that.
Kim, do we have, do we get asked to report out on ourselves and our, and our missions accomplished?
That's what we, we have in the past.
We have?
Yeah.
So it has.
Yes.
But that would make sense.
Yeah.
And, you know, HPC is agency, let's have the opportunity to go before council and say, you know, this is what we did, blah, 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 blah. And sometimes they're really pleasant pieces of products.
Do we have a sense of like, this could be an interesting, how do we measure our success? You know, what are we counting? And especially if our monthly meaning work is quite robust, then to be able to really identify the components that our spreadsheet accounts, I don't know, now I'm getting excited, we'll get a grade. And I'm hoping that they.
Yeah.
I would get a class, get a grade. But I would love to know how we, we would measure success, or we would be able to warn ourselves, like, this is not the best thing to be advertising that we spend our time on, or that isn't useful or meaningful or something else.
Well, it doesn't matter what they like, we need to figure out where our objectives are, what we think is important, and where we need to, you know, put our time and resources. And then strategies that kind of like go with that, and then the tactics, what are we gonna do?
But isn't like eighty percent of our effort reactive? I mean, we, we are a body that exists first and foremost to respond to applications. And so that absolutely has to be factored in as, like, not that we can't do proactive work, we absolutely can do proactive work, but it's gotta be an acknowledgement that we are largely a reactive body. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I think part of that being, you're correct in terms of it's an application, you are a judicial body to that response to, and approves, et cetera, applications. The flip side is, you can also be that recommending body to say, let's look at, doesn't mean this, let's look at, or providing support for a project, even saying, or kind of saying, hey, this is missing, we need to figure out, can staff, can we, as a city, take some X on? You guys will definitely, I'm just part of, it's not sure what it'll look like, but have already been included on discussions about the Littleton Boulevard plan. So that's definitely more of a proactive goal that you have. So it is a balance, but yeah, your primary function is to designate and respond to COAs. That's just like the primary function of a local surface restoration mission. You can go beyond that, and often they do. But that's a kind of primary, well, I guess also fast-paced applications for Littleton, but yeah.
So given that.
Potential verticals.
Right. And, and are out of our control. We don't determine the number of COA applications that come in here. So I would want to be held accountable for giving X number that.
And I don't.
That's driven by.
Yes. And we don't.
No, just to Lissy's desire to give an A plus.
My lot goes more towards wanting to highlight that, and it would be interesting to get some historic information, our business around that we have had presented, twenty-five percent more COAs than the previous year, for example, and what did we do with them? And I think that's interesting to show, you know, what is the desire and appetite for the community? Why are we here to do this? If they're meant to approve, then why are we here? To demonstrate through a measurable what we're doing is important.
But we don't control.
I don't feel.
I think it's an interesting and important thing to be able to measure.
Right. Yeah, so I do think, to your point, the number of COAs we get, we're, as much as we would roll this law each year, it also means though, to me, stand, maybe people aren't preserving buildings, they aren't asking to make those modifications or that. But having that locally designated gives it that protection. So you're here, even though you may not see a ton of COAs each year, having that, because you're designated protects it.
More is not necessarily that.
And, and I'm saying, yeah, if we increase a decrease.
We're just seeing where you're at.
But how do we know what we're doing unless we have some sense of what it is that's coming our way?
Yeah.
To, to me, that, yeah, it's like a very, it's a very, I go in, Kim, I'd really want to know, you're not verbalizing, but I can feel that you're not feeling it. What is it?
Tell me.
Tell me you're something, God, that's fine.
But I, I just think that that is, we should be doing, and we can, as a capacity, so much more than simply applying the COAs. And again, you know, we really, at the end of the day, we don't control the number of COAs. Of course, however, we, you know, conceivably could influence that. And, you know, with preservation ideas and promotion, and along Littleton Boulevard, we could possibly force the building owners to, preserve their building, maybe to seek designation or something like that, that could result in more COAs. But that's a measurable, but I, I just don't think it's, it's relevant.
If the, if the, can I throw out a possibility then, that if the, if what you're looking for is a measurable goal, and, and we have a measurable goal around the COAs, maybe it's the efficiency with what we do, whichever one's gonna, so if we are.
I was thinking less around like, COAs, like, this is our north star, we want high quantities, and we want to more along the line of, that's a call to action we have to respond to, so it's interesting to know what we're doing as a response.
Yeah.
I think what is a really interesting measurable that we can think of, is what we can actually have control over, because we are reactive, as we said, and that's out of, we can't go in. Russ loves the R I S. And nobody wants to either. But one, our thing that we can say, we have we have planned and recommended something that is really interesting, is showing these outcomes, and it's positive in this way. That's interesting, because we would be the source of the action rather than the reaction to the question.
Like a preservation plan?
Yeah. So that is, one of the big goals with this is to kind of create that measurable work plan. To try to create those items, and that's where objectives to an extent are measurable, but they're still a little bit more broad. But then those action items are those, I can't use a different term, other than you said, objective strategies and then tactics. Tactics or tactics. Those should be measurable, to your point. So it could be, kick off a preservation plan by X date. Do you know it? That kind of thing. So that can be reasonable, or it can be educating the community, get more people to attend HLI events, or partner more effectively with them. And then you can say, okay, well, we have this educational event in partnership, and that is a measurable item. So it's less the kind of numbers ongoing thing, it could just be this one thing. But that one thing has an impact, because understanding and kind of educating people on the importance and benefits of the sort preservation, while acknowledging what people see as drawbacks, absolutely, have to include that for sure, but that. And getting information out, showing it in positive light is incredibly helpful and growing. So that's the other thing, the other kind of piece that also you guys have a role with, is supporting and growing the program and stewards of preservation in Littleton, so that those items, those things can really start to be our metric items. Outside of just the day-to-day, we're busy COAs and do X, Y, and Z. Like, we have the grant program for downtown. Is there avenues we'll get? Can we make a recommendation to the city council to expand, to create a different program to do X, Y, and Z? So that can also be what we look at too, of saying, we will set up to make it financially more useful for the new sort of districts. So the Littleton Legacy List, can we get some of those designated? What, what's the barrier to people designated at the place? So that's also the thing, the things that we start to look at.
Is there really, can you put up your slide seven? Because I like how you identified three broad topic areas, and that could be how we, your role.
And those are just options, those are really common ones. And yeah, so that's kind of really broad topic areas, I mean, the goals themselves can be preservation, engagement, development, like, it can be that simple, or it can be broad, like, kind of written out in the form of things. But, yeah, those are kind of the things that we recommend at face looking at. And education really being that kind of broad community work, yeah. And all of these, at least especially the first two, can always include the public, and probably should. The development slash training review, that may be more internal, or even, it can even be as broad as partnerships as well. What is, what are the groups that are busy, how long, that we could work with?
I also think too, like, this is, I think it's great to have like broad overarching stuff, but it also, like, I am definitely an achiever by nature, it sounds like Lissy might be too. And so it would be nice to have a couple, like, short-term wins, or things that we can get under our belt, just to kind of start to have some of those. I feel like we haven't had those in a while. And I, yeah, I think that would be nice, just to get a couple, I don't wanna say easily achievable, but things that we can achieve relatively soon.
Yeah, absolutely. And maybe, to Kim Lee's point, maybe we focus on just a year-long work program. We have the goals and objectives for this kind of broader period, but maybe it is just this first year, but in that kind of spreadsheet format, of saying, and it includes those items that we can gain momentum. They talk about kind of low-hanging roots sometimes, but it's, those are still helpful things to do, and it gives momentum and confidence in kind of getting into this work. I know we're about to split on new versus having been with the commission for a minute, so maybe this is a good opportunity to kind of start bringing those together, and kind of give some of that momentum back to folks who've been here, and then that excitement that's on board.
Yeah, I feel like it's a good time too, because this session of this group has really started too, so it would be a good period, like in April to March, you know, or something similar.
What would be a good example of a quick one?
Well, I love Kim's idea of the Mid-Mid Mile signs along Littleton Boulevard.
Oh, so it can be that tactical?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wow.
Um, these are my ideas, and these are definitely a little bit more in the weeds than these bigger topics. But I think some internal training of the Secretary of Interior Guide Standards and Littleton Guidelines, like, maybe if there's someone who helped create that document from a past board, he can come talk to us, I think that would be awesome. The Mid-Mid Mile signs, Kim's. Kim, I think you have some code changes too, that you wanted to look at. Maybe partnering with HLI to do a walking tour of the Littleton Legacy List, if there are some that are clustered together, would be fun. I mentioned the Mid-Mid event for HLI in September, would be partnering with them on that. Looking at potential designations or areas where we could, where there's some resources that we could look at and make suggestions. And then I also think like plaques and signage. Like, I think our, our city is getting old enough, like, I go to Key West a lot, and Key West, there's signs on basically every house, like, who lived there, what the business it was, like, different things like that, just to get people involved, and understanding that Littleton is much more than just like a suburb.
Yeah.
You know?
You get them talking about it.
Uh-huh.
About it.
Yes.
Like, what, you know, what is this?
Right. Who was here? Why is this cool? So those are my, like, ideas.
And then so my thought of a work plan is that, you know, these, these are the things that we have to accomplish. And one of them, and I'll just throw out two examples, would be a preservation plan and updated ordinance. Those are important things. And your, your tactics that you do to accomplish that, is really, at the end of the day, that I always think of it as, we're, we're not in a tactic phase, these are all of these things we have to accomplish. But if we, if you're, we're gonna do these things, but if they don't produce an ordinance and a preservation plan, then who cares if you check them all off your list? You know, it's like, well, it didn't work. But I still don't have my preservation plan and my ordinance.
And I, I can see that, and, and just even as you thought tonight, like, the amount of work that was put into that application, that will now be counted. that will now be a minor adjustment is still so valuable. So they did so much of the work. So I would say that there's a significant amount of value in this that we got up until this point, even though the final product isn't there, to show that is a value of the product. The journey is a product too, and I think that's, that's an interesting thing to highlight. What if, um, we get to be into this and there is, we have never successfully accomplished a preservation plan for some reason or another, but we spent four years trying. Those four years have still been building merit for something to either inform a future plan or to do something. So there, there's, I just think about.
I agree. I actually kind of, I think to an extent, I understand where you're coming from because you always want that kind of thought. I think the way I'm kind of maybe looking at it is saying, this tactic didn't work. What else can we do? So still understanding, still keep that final document, but that final thing of saying, preservation plan, we're going to keep that on there until we can get it going. Or we realize there is a better approach or there's a better something. But showing, to your point, showing how we tried and made it more successful is helpful in for informing that. So I think it's kind of a balance between both of what, learning from what you want, but also not necessarily having to, like, absolutely publicize this, like. Your kind of thing, we want to be transparent, but we can move, we can move past and move on, let's try something new.
What do you want to keep? What do you want to change?
Yeah.
And also not losing sight of the overarching, like, preservation plan and ordinance, maybe those.
For the, for the more experienced commissioners, which of those two is more urgent in your opinion?
Yeah. You absolutely leave that plan because that, you know, does kind of drive that ordinance. Um, but, you know, your ordinance is going to be, um, kind of the teeth and where the rubber meets the road. And, you know, the ordinance tells you legally, um, you can do this and you can't do that. And in ordinance, it's obviously, you know, about it by council.
I would also say we are subject to loads of funding. So to that point, sometimes the funding mechanism is what's going to tell us when to work on something too. So an ordinance update could be done internally, may not include as much, um, funding. So like, preservation plan is going to need substantial funding. Um, it's going to take substantial amount of time. I do think to your point, ordinance updates will probably come out as a recommendation on the plans due. But making smaller tweaks to things that we know may or may not work, may, may or may not make sense. We can do that in the meantime. Um, putting together this work plan is kind of one of those steps of saying, okay, we don't have a preservation plan yet. Let's not just sit and wait. Let's go ahead and come up with some ideas to get us at least moving, doing the things. And when we do the preservation plan, maybe it'll confirm what's on there or maybe we will need to reprioritize. And that's totally okay, but this at least keeps us going. So some of that, to your point, like which one goes first? It's kind of an in-the-moment, it's a little bit, you may just look at the scale of the thing. So I wouldn't necessarily.
We still will have to make that. What's the difference between ordinance and code?
I think.
They are.
I would, um, love that, like, when I, uh, especially not knowing, if I haven't always given it to them. So fun. I found it would be whatever kind of education you could get would be so great.
Yeah, there's maybe a set, especially to go over the code and what it is. And the code is available, um, it is, is available online. If you were going to do something to your house, for instance, um, you know, I want to see what does code say. Um, and you can access that.
I will, I, I do think, I mean, it's like governmental writing, you know, so it's kind of dense. Like I think it would help to hear it, like from Sarah or someone who lives in it every day. Because I think I, I think I brought the code quite, especially when we were updating it. And I'm like, I'm pretty sure I understand this, but it would be good to know what an expert really tells us, you know?
And your preservation code, there are all kinds of model codes that state has available that are, you know, they're, they're, they can be really plug-in place. You can customize them for your city and your specific city to use. So my, my ordinance may, um, that, that could be a pretty quick bet. And accomplish that would be, I think, a hell of a good bet.
So the city code has building code for any new construction and then separate preservation code?
So it's actually, yes, yes. So it is, uh, city code and then in chapter 10 is the, you know, by, oh, no. Yeah. Just kidding, sorry. We, you call it different names and I'm like, sorry. I was like, what is that? I've been calling it EEO for the past five years.
It is 10. You always speak EEO for us.
Yes. But it has its own, I believe it's chapter eight or nine or section eight or nine within that. And then it has stuff at the administrative level. So it's actually two faces point. It is a little, codes are not always the most, um.
Yeah, yeah, I would say that.
Very, it's like, it's like, it's a legal document, so it's very, very dense. And yeah, you can read it and understand it, but.
And you don't have to know all the city code. We're dealing with preservation code. And it is different, you know, and we, our job is to figure out exactly how they play together, right?
Maybe building code and preservation code, what's the other in that they play together?
Well, um, in a, a historic district or for a designated building, um, uh, the ordinance, you know, um, the code is, could be slightly different, could, could be different. You have different, um, requirements within a historic district and different ways to apply that code within historic district. And then in addition, the design guidelines and all of those other things that overlay on top of it as well. So it's kind of get a little complicated. And now we have the design guidelines, everyone has those. Um, and, uh, you know, there were, I mean, lots of notes. There, there hidden files in your office somewhere, maybe. But there were lots of notes made on the ordinance and on what, what kinds of things that we might want to tackle. But that, I mean, that, that would just be a piece of, of, just to be, to be, to be.
To, to be talking about that. But speaking of which, um, you know, and this might be inappropriate, but I don't see any liars here. While they have my job for about two months, y'all.
One thing, um, for your applicant on this, the last COA we looked at, um, there were a lot of surprises and, on, you know, there were tilted puppy dog heads everywhere. And, um, I think that, uh, you know, maybe a, a point of guidance might be for him to make it all easier. Um, is, you know, what, what would you present to, to get your building permit? You know, what, what would you present? Um, and what kinds of anticipate, what questions and, and things they're going to want to see? And those are the same things.
I think taking it down to that level is extremely important.
What's that?
Taking it all down to that level, I think is extremely important. If we're not willing to say no, if we're not willing to, to ask questions, if we're not willing to put the applicants through their paces, I don't think we're achieving anything.
Yeah, and that, that might be, be very helpful to him as far as, you know, this is the level of detail I need to present to Sarah.
Well, when you bring in a set of drawings, they have to be correct.
They have to be correct.
Yeah.
They have to be correct.
I mean, it's a mistake, by the way, it's just a mistake.
If they're not correct, fix them and come back, continue.
Yeah.
Continuance is something, you know, and I've been doing this for like thirty-five years. And, uh, you know, when, when I appeared before, uh, boards and, and we discussed something and changes were made, we decided to do, let's say, a lower roof pitch, try to, for me, on the other side of the table, to get the approval. Then it was requested that, okay, make the changes and come to the next meeting. And I think if I would have in the thirty-five years that I appeared before boards, tell them, well, you know, some of those answers of, yeah, probably should have changed that or that's really not correct, so don't look at that.
And we're, we're probably going to do that in the few, you know.
I would have been bounced out like in two minutes.
Yeah.
And I, you know, this all sounds great and I, I, you know, but to me, I don't know whether, I, those are where the results are going to be. Where, where we had enough input with an applicant to get them to, to maybe make some of these suggested changes and stuff like that. Because when you drive by and it's built, you can see it and it's real. You know what I mean? You know, this other stuff all sounds great to me and I'm not, I, I just, my focus, I think, is, is more, you know, the nuts and bolts of, you know, what we're seeing, is it correct? I don't legally know how far you can go to make suggestions and stuff like that. But I, I just think questions and putting, you know, making, you know, making the applicant, uh, be responsive to, to things through codes and, and, uh, you know, and requirements and stuff like that and make sure that they're following that yields results. Results that are, you know, because once a building is built, it's safe for a long time.
And this, this applicant was a, you know, he, he, he was a little loose with what he was presenting in here. And, and this is kind of different than, yeah, I think there were a lot of surprises in, in the presentation tonight. And, um, normally the applicants are a little tighter. They're, you know, they have engineers on staff or architects have, you know, are presenting this. And they have worked with staff to kind of go back and forth, um, on, on what's actually going to fly before they create that application because nobody wants continuances, you know?
And even the, um, the surprises, if I'm following you, of creating a parapal war for signage. I mean, what kind of signage, you know, one goes to the other, what kind of signage are you talking about?
I really feel we shouldn't go down the path of discussing the actual application.
Well, I think just to, just to pull it back, I think maybe to Robert's point, I, I mean, you are our architectural, um, person. You know, you definitely have that expertise and there, I don't think there's any way that we're ever going to learn any of that. But I think for our plan, we could, there are ways that we could educate ourselves, not necessarily architecturally because that's your background and your expertise, but on the code and the standards and things like that. So that way we all feel equipped to ask questions and bring things up as we see them in the, yeah.
Again, these are my opinions.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not trying to.
And I think that, that applicant, when, when he's coming back to you, one would hope, um, he would appreciate that, that guidance about, you know, what, what should I really do? Just pretend, well, we're presenting it for your permit.
Again, I don't know the rules and regulations. But we could have even talked to him about the possibility of doing that privacy wall that he thought he would come back for.
I, well, I think he is going to come back, so we probably can't talk about it anymore because he's going to come back and apply.
Yeah.
Um, and so we can't have already discussed the, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a generic question?
Yes.
How common or rare is it for the commission to vote, um, uh, differently than staff recommendation?
Uh, once every eight or so.
Once every eight?
There has been, there has been a, an occasion where live in the room, we've decided, um, you know, actually there's an extra recommendation that's important to us and so we amend. Well, it's not technically an amendment, we, we changed the suggested, uh, but it's, it's not often, you know, it, it's so. Went out of eight is just pulling it out of a hat, but it's like that.
You guys have every, as you are the final deciding body, I'm here to make a recommendation, but ultimately you get to make that decision. So, um, if you feel it's not correct or you don't agree with staff, totally fine. That's definitely, um, under your roof.
Usually it's a tweak that comes up during the conversation.
Absolutely.
It's like, oh, you know, we didn't think about, or it comes up. And so we're like, we're happy, happy, we're, we're, we're willing to, uh, vote on this COA with a slightly different, um, amendment, you know, yeah.
Yeah. Sometimes it's conditional approval.
That's right.
Sometimes, um, you know, the, the emotional completely change from what he.
And sometimes there's, for want of a better word, a continuance, which I do not even regard as anything other than just how this works, you know, to your point, you know, sometimes you go away and you come back and, and that's, that's just.
And, you know, I mean, our job, I mean, is to, you know, one of the things that is, that is in kind of the charter of the Historic Preservation Commission is to, um, you know, we want to protect these buildings. Um, our responsibility is to the buildings. Um, but we, we do, I mean, we need to live in a vibrant city. And, um, we do need to, um, uh, you know, to, to watch out kind of for the economic health of, of the community. Um, and, you know, we do work with business owners and the buildings do not exist in a diorama. And they don't exist for us to simply look at. But, um, you know, having said that, um, downtown's change and evolve. But, um, you know, we have to make sure that, that, that the integrity of the property is there to change and, and evolve, um, in, in the future. Because we don't know, you know, we're looking at it to deal with a twenty-twenty-four issue. We don't know what the issue is going to be in, in twenty, um, thirty-four or fifty or something, something like that. So we have to be responsible for that. And building owners have to, you know, their building plans need to be able to fit within the confines of it and historic building in a downtown historic district. You know, if, if Topgolf came in here, I mean, it wouldn't work, you know?
What I find really interesting is how we build, how we're creating, uh, new sort of de facto rules by relief. In other words, the, uh, if you think of like the Denver Brewing Company with the metal, the metal, uh, walls, you know, that's a solution to, how can I create something that's subsuri, you know, that's, uh, uh, subsurient to the, to the main building and that you can spot immediately is not part of the historical structure. But to the, uh, to the citizen's comment, we are still creating a new vocabulary of what these buildings look like. Even if we're doing it accidentally or even if this is how people are coming up with solutions to these rules. And fifty years from now, people are going to want to know whether we want to preserve those metal, those metal cages. And I'm not, I'm not against them, I'm just saying that we, you know, we should be aware that along the way, if we use the same solutions over and over again, we're creating a character. Um, which might be okay, it might not, I'm saying that we should be aware of it.
Have they been referenced before in, in a, in an application, like, like other building?
Yeah, this is okay because.
Well, they're always because they meet the, they meet the criteria.
Right.
But it's certain criteria that are coming along to these solutions, you know? It, it has to be smaller, it has to not look historic, you know, and, and so forth.
Yeah, I think it was in, in alignment with the requirement that it, um, keeps in the spirit of surrounding buildings as well. And so it was interesting to hear the reference made to right across the street is our reference. And to your point, that will then be the next potential person with the same solutions reference. They'll have two to reference because if we, if, if it continues along down.
Yeah, I would have to say in terms of that kind of referential thing, it is, I would say, different in terms of, and how you can kind of not necessarily, to your point, continue to just plop these down everywhere. Is, uh, location of those things matter? A lot of those buildings won't necessarily be able to do something like that. It's buildings who have that rear potential or maybe that side. So it is, so there are mechanisms to kind of keep from plopping one in front of the other, like if this is going in front of a building. Maybe not. If it's going on a side, even though that side is, but that may be really exposed and if it's being attached to still a historic portion that is architecturally significant, maybe it doesn't go there. So there is some precedence that gets set, absolutely. But there are mechanisms to kind of, you can kind of keep it in that same, like, this can happen if these conditions are existing.
Yeah, and, but we, you're absolutely right. Um, we have to be very mindful of precedent. Um, and, you know, this is, um, you know, we, we try to deal with, uh, facades, things that are not visible from the public right away. I mean, you can see that from every single driving down Prince, I see it, you know, looking across the street, I see it. Yeah. And it's, this is a, you know, you don't want to, because, you know, we are quasi judicial. And so you don't want somebody down the block not only saying, well, I want to reference that. It's just that you approved it for him.
Yes.
You know, I want you to approve it for me, so.
Interesting. One other thing, I did not, speaking of precedence, I did not know that packets came any other way than that it came to us this last time. So I feel very spoiled because apparently it was a beautiful thing. I loved it. I felt like it was easy.
All the background information.
Oh, everything laid out in like, we're looking at this, and these are the three things that relate to that, and this is the opinion. So wonderful.
Okay, great.
But you said I present.
I thought it was a great packet.
No, like you said, I was like, I didn't know that now that this was.
I would have to say Jesse, I looked at Jesse's from Dirt Coffee a lot. So he definitely also said, I'm not going to take all of that. I definitely used previous examples to build it.
That was a good one, too.
Yes, yeah. So I thought that that was really well done. It was a most recent one. So I, it is, I am happy to keep doing it that way, mostly because I, I'm not going to reinvent the wheel, so I'll probably always kind of pull a previous one.
Yes.
And start building off of that, so it'll keep that structure in place. But happy to know that that is, makes sense for everyone.
Didn't know, I was being so delighted, so.
Oh, great.
And now I do, so, yay, great.
Yeah, but this applicant was, that was a challenge, and I would say it's different than what we're used to seeing.
Okay.
So.
What else? Yeah, so I would recommend maybe a little bit of homework to an extent, which would be to take a look at Envision Littleton's guiding principles, as well as, I went through and kind of found the area for heritage arts, recreation and tourism, as well as economy and tax base, did mention historic preservation. If you want to look more broadly at the other goals and objectives within that plan and see, this isn't necessarily calling out historic preservation, but it has a component, feel free to kind of start kind of looking at that. And then as well as the said, specifically that enhancing historic character and cultural fabric are good examples of just kind of recent plans that had that engagement. Also, in terms of the guiding principles with Envision Littleton, look, take a look at those and see if we want to actually use them for our plan. I do recommend it. Envision Littleton is a comprehensive plan for the city. It's meant to cover all aspects of the city. We should, HPC should help push the city towards that plan. So kind of working under those same guiding principles can be really helpful. If, and even if it's specific ones, or like, these don't really make sense necessarily, we don't see how they can work in. But have those kind of in your mind as what you would like to kind of move forward for next time. And let me see if there's anything else. Or we can look at a specific statement. Really, either one of those would work. The guiding principles are just already created, so maybe that's the best way. Whatever works for y'all on that one.
I do think it would be helpful, too, if you want, if you could send just a fully created plan just to give us an idea of what that just might look like.
Northland Friends, sounds good.
Okay. I actually Googled examples, and for some reason, that's like the very first thing that pops up, is that Northland one. And I was like, oh no.
The algorithm knows.
I know, I was like, it knows I'm searching for it? It knows that I'm the one who uploaded it on that website?
Algorithm does crazy things.
It's just so darn good. It pops right up to the surface.
I think there are some lessons learned from that one that I will be bringing to this one. That will hopefully make things smoother. One other thing that we should decide on, maybe not tonight, but moving forward is, Kimberly, you kind of mentioned maybe just like a one-year work plan piece. We can decide next time, or if we want to just like, that's the way we want to go, so that we don't have to get so into the weeds on everything. Totally fine with me. Or, and I can bring, I'll bring you one, most of them are the full kind of five-year work plan. I'll see if I can find some that are just one year. But it's really, it's y'all's, it's y'all's guiding kind of work plan, so you get to do whatever you want with it.
I mean, like I said, I'm an achiever, so I like the year plan. Or if we do maybe a mix of both, a five-year plan with these specific objectives that we want to achieve in the next twelve months. Maybe something like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I seem to remember Pam Grove, because she's, she was really our kind of council liaison, requesting on behalf of council a work plan.
Okay.
And I think she had in mind a one-year.
Okay. I like the both. That sounds great, we can both.
Yeah. Both.
Yeah, so we could show them this year, we're doing this, and it will tie into the five years.
Gotcha. So, okay, so maybe it's the kind of one-year spreadsheet, but still the overall goals and objectives, look at the five years.
Like have some, have some actual action items. Oh, I was going to say, like, have some actual action items that can be accomplished this year.
If we want to say the words preservation plan, it needs to go longer than twelve months, right?
Yes, and these items.
So it's a five-year plan with actionable, measurable goals for the next twelve months, the way you said it.
Actual measurable, bleh. The goals are for five years? The goals and objectives can be for five years, the tactics and action items are for a year. Yeah, no, you're good. And things can also, we can put on there and say, preservation plan is on here, but we know it's going to go into the next year. That too. Just because it's on a one-year plan, like, it can be shifted, or we can know this is going to go beyond the one year. That's totally fine.
And I, I mean, you had it in your presentation too, but it's definitely a living document. You know, things change and over time, and so, yeah, so.
Absolutely.
I think we definitely need to be flexible while also having some goals.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Great.
Great.
All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Well, great discussion, everyone. Thank you. I will, are we, are we ready? Okay, I'll end the study session at eight forty-two.